Six o'clock, I would like to call this meeting into order. John, would you deliver the indication, please?
Dear Lord, please guide this council to make the best decisions to benefit our citizens, be with our policemen, our firemen, our city workers, and keep them safe throughout the week. In your name we pray, amen.
Item A, please.
I plead with the reasons to defy the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Counsel, the agenda that you received Friday, there's an addition. Item E is now, I call it as a request for continuation, Bass Cafe. I believe that's the only change, would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, with a change. Thank you. Motion to second discussion. Be in an all fair, humble, sure hand. If unanimous. Minutes of the May 6, 2019, regular meeting.
Regularly, Councilman, Monday, May 6, 2019. Mayor President Faust called in to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonny Waters to give the indication. He called on Councilmember Kurt Raffel, who recognized the nine chin Pickens Young Guns to lead the pledge allegiance. Mayor President Faust asked that the agenda be renewed and approved by council. City manager Brandon Douglas asked that there be a second part added to the chamber update to consider approval of the joint resolution with Pickens County regarding economic development position. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the agenda with a change. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously by council present. Mayor President Faust asked that it be noted that Mayor John Weaver was absent due to attending the Georgia Rural Water Conference, and that Councilmember Ann Sane was absent due to illness. Mayor President Faust called on City Clerk Lissel Hall to read the minutes of the May 6, 2019, regular meeting. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to adopt minutes, spread Councilmember Ann Sane seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A, under Old Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Lonny Waters to present Mr. Kyle Brock and his family. Mr. Waters stated that Mr. Brock had been a strong supporter of animals and had helped the community in many ways. Mr. Waters unveiled a marble monument to be placed at the park dedicating the park to Kyle. Item B, under Old Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Brandon Douglas and Councilmember Ann Sane to give an update on a referendum to be placed on the ballot for the Alcohol Ordinance Amendment to allow for early Sunday alcohol sales. Mr. Douglas stated that this would allow sales by drink an hour and a half earlier than presently allowed. He stated the change would be from beginning 12:30 PM to change to 11:00 AM. He stated that he is asking council to approve the language in the referendum. Mayor President Faust entertained a motion, Councilmember Sunny Proctor made such motion, Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item C, under Old Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Mr. Douglas to present the second reading of an addition to the city's planning and zoning ordinance. Mr. Douglas stated that this addition was to clarify the composition of the planning and zoning board. Mr. Douglas read the addition, Mayor President Faust stated this should be considered the second reading, Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve this as the second reading, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item D, under Old Business, Mayor President Faust called on Mr. Douglas to present to council an agreement with Clark Patterson Lee to provide professional services for the building department. Mr. Douglas stated that as many cities do, Jasper has only one planning and zoning department staff. He stated that as Jasper is currently seeing an uptick in building activity, there is a need for some assistance in the planning and zoning department. He stated that rather than hire additional staff, he recommended that the city hire the assistants on a contract basis as needed. He stated that Clark Patterson Lee could assist the city with plan reviews, building inspection services, as well as other services as needed. He stated that the agreement would not be contractually bound, but rather on an as-needed basis. He also provided council with a list of services and hourly rates. Mayor President Faust entertained a motion that the city enter into an agreement with Clark Patterson Lee to provide services on an as-needed basis. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made such motion, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A, under New Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Jackie Dunn to present to council a street lighting project for 2019 Christmas. Mr. Dunn presented a quote from Universal Concepts through the city page that took lights from the two trees on Main Street in 2018 for $8,210. Councilmember Kurt Raffel asked if the $8,210 could be broken down between the period of labor, more discussion followed. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to table this discussion, and questions followed, such as breakdown of costs, warranty, storage, and whether the item was budgeted. Motion to table, carried unanimously. Mayor President Faust stated that this item should appear on next month's regular meeting as Old Business. Item B, under New Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Pickens County Chamber Director Amory Godfrey to give an update on chamber activities. Ms. Godfrey spoke of the current and future activities of the chamber. She stated that she also had a joint resolution that Pickens County Attorney Phil Landham had prepared between the city and the county to form a six-person committee to be called the Economic Development Director Hiring Committee. She stated that the resolution required that within 120 days, the committee develop a description of the duties and responsibilities, develop the parameters of accountability, conduct interviews of our candidates to both governments, and account for the use of funds. She stated that the chamber shall disburse $20,000 in escrow funds to the committee to fulfill its duties. She stated the chamber shall disburse $30,000 to the Chase Sun Group Incorporated for a strategic plan for economic development for both governments. Mayor President John Faust entertained motion, Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to approve the resolution as presented, Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor President Faust appointed Councilmembers Sunny Proctor and Kurt Raffel, as well as city manager Brandon Douglas to serve on the committee for the city. Item C, under New Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Mr. Douglas to present to council suggested improvements to the park known as Peace Park on North Main Street. Mr. Douglas stated that he would like to plant flowers and other vegetation in the fountains and open up the park by trimming some of the overgrowth. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to allow the park improvements, Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item D, under New Business, Mr. Douglas stated that he had a request from Pickens Arts and Culture Alliance in collaboration with the Pickens Historical Society, Southern Appalachian Folk School, Art Pickens, Artist Gathering, and Market, as well as several of the downtown businesses, to reserve Peace Park on the second Friday and Saturday of each month from May through November for Jasper Jubilee event for arts activities as well as vendors. He stated the park would be used from 12:30 until 5:00 PM on Fridays, and 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM on Saturdays. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to allow the use of the park, Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, discussion followed, motion carried unanimously. Item A, under New Business, Mr. Douglas stated that he had a request for a special event alcohol license permit from Prevent Child Abuse Pickens for July 19th to 20th at Lee Newton Park for a sanctioned barbecue competition. He stated the event would consist of 35 or more professional barbecue competitors from the southeast United States, as well as food vendors, food trucks, and live music. Mayor President Faust entertained a motion to approve the permit, Councilmember Kurt Raffel made such motion, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item F, under New Business, Mr. Douglas stated that Landbridge Development LLC had requested a special call meeting on May 20th to present a rezoning application for approval. Mr. Douglas stated that the staff had advertised a planning commission meeting for May 9th, as well as the recommendation to be heard at the regular council meeting on June 3rd for the rezoning application. Mayor President Faust recognized Mr. Gary Hammond of Landbridge Development. Mr. Hammond presented council with his need for a special call meeting in order to have his property rezoned for financing purposes. Discussion with council followed, Mayor President Faust entertained a motion, no motion was made, no action taken. Item G, under New Business, Mayor President Faust recognized Mr. Douglas to ask for approval for the number of qualifying days for this year's election. Mr. Douglas stated that staff had checked with Nelson and Talking Rock, and both cities were satisfied with the five-day qualifying period. Mayor President Faust entertained a motion to approve a five-day qualifying period for this year's election. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made such motion, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item H, under New Business, Mayor President Faust called on Mr. Douglas to present to council a legal agreement for representation from a law firm of Holsey Oliver and Mayhar LLP. He stated that our city attorney, Mr. Bill Piffett, advised that there may be conflicts with himself representing the city in a lawsuit filed by Brad Dilve regarding the rezoning of property. He stated that Holsey Oliver and Mayhar LLP had been sought out by staff to represent the city in this case, and is asking council to approve the agreement between the city and this firm. Mayor President Faust entertained a motion, Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion that council allow the engagement of Holsey Oliver and Mayhar LLP to be executed by the city manager, along with the mayor, on behalf of the city of Jasper for this matter. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item I, under New Business, Mr. Douglas stated that the city was seeing a lot of interest in Highway 115 development. He said he would like to form a committee to look at the city's water fee structure to determine, as the city deals with the various developments, the city is prepared in advance through committee review that we are within the parameters of best practices. He stated that he would like Water and Sewer Superintendent David Hall and himself serve on that committee at the staff level. Discussion followed, Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to form such a committee consisting of Mr. Douglas, Mr. Hall, and possibly public safety representation. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, discussion followed, and it was suggested that Councilmember Tony Fountain also serve on this committee. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor President Faust appointed Brandon Douglas, David Hall, and Councilmember Fountain to serve on the committee. Item J, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Finance Director Lisa Woolton presents a 2018 budget amendment and resolution for council's approval. Ms. Woolton stated that this amendment was necessary to reallocate budget funds at the department level in the general fund and the technology surcharge fund. She stated that the auditors had reviewed the budget amendment and had verbally approved. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve the amendment, Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item G, under New Business, Mayor President Faust stated that council needed to go into executive session in order to consult with legal counsel regarding pending threatened litigation. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to go into executive session, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor President Faust closed the meeting. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to come out of executive session, Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously, Mayor President Faust opened the meeting. Finance Director gave the financial report for the month of April 2019. Lonny Waters gave a report on Rhodes and Street. Chief Regal Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of April 2019. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of April 2019. Being no other business, to come before council, Mayor President Faust adjourned the meeting. Council is scheduled to come May next with a regular meeting that will be held June 3rd, 2019.
Page two, count.
Ms. Lisa, in the first page where you were reading the minutes, I made the motion to adopt Ms. Anne Woodpatson, and so it was Sunny Proctor that seconded the motion. If you'll make that correction.
On the, oh yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion to approve as regular that change.
There was one more change. I was not here, and I think I have to call for a motion.
I will leave your name on there somewhere. Okay. I'll find it.
Yeah, just did it again.
With that also, would entertain a motion?
Make a motion, yes, I do see that under item J. Make a motion that we need to, Kurt doesn't read with the item J change, and the minute read changes.
House keep in there, be a second.
Yes. I'll make the changes.
Can we just read this now?
I don't worry, you know, please.
Any other discussion? Be in an all fair, humble, sure hand. Thank you. Next item, under Old Business, city lighting, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, everybody. You have this opportunity to come talk to y'all again today. As you well, as we talked about last month, there's a proposal before y'all about the sea lights for Christmas. There's some inquiries about whether if we put the lights up, would they be, would the warranty still be valid, and that is true. So whether they put it up or we put it up, the warranty is covered. Other than that, the cost is what it is, and for that, I can ask any questions. Another, Mayor, you weren't here last time, I'll give you a sort of an idea. This is what it looks like in the alleyway during Christmas. I think everyone of y'all saw this, and you weren't here. And then the poles, there is 27 poles in downtown Jasper. 14 will have this garland on it with the ribbon on top, and so that's what it is. Any questions? I will say this, I brought the lights today. As many of you have been aware, there's lights put on the top of buildings in the last week. Those lights look like this. The ones that will be dripping are hanging from Angry Auction, and the barbecue place will look like this. So they're bigger lights, bigger quality light, but they don't take any more power. In fact, I was talking to Ryan today, from my building to Angry Auction takes two amps of electricity, and he said he could probably run it on up the road for less than five. So Ryan was supposed to be back today to start hanging lights, and I'm sort of jumping off course here, but they're getting a bunch of material in today, and there's nobody there to take the materials, so people in the process of putting the lights on the periphery of buildings on Monday, of which there's only two, to my recollection. The new restaurant across the street, which is George, and I can't remember George's last name, and then my building on the corner with the Keep America or Keep Pickens Beautiful will be done, and that will be all the lights right now that will be, have the lights on top.
Page two, Councilman. Would you go ahead there?
Jack, what was the total on that? Is that?
It's $8,120, what the police have said.
Okay, now, is that, you said that we would still have a warranty if we put them up?
Yes, sir.
How much more is it if they put it up?
Brandon, do you remember what they said? They unfortunately didn't get back to me on, I don't think it's a big figure, but the main thing that she wanted to stress to me, to y'all, is two things. She wanted to get this quote in now because lights are going up because of what's going on with the trading, with China, and so on and so forth, and she wants to get y'all this price, we still want to put it up. Number two, the big thing with storage, if y'all do put them up, we've got to store these things, and they'll last forever. They're good quality lights, and the garland's great. I've seen it.
At long reason I asked that, if it's going to be a significant amount, savings of the city equipment, versus if they put it up, this is what they do, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Just going to put up a professional looking job?
Yes, sir.
Not saying that.
I agree, sir.
Not saying that we won't, that's not the business we're in, so that's why I asked for the difference in price if they, versus if they put it up or not.
Yes, sir. The county is doing the same thing, they are letting them put it up, they're storing it, the tree, they're getting tree right there, and the two tree will be just, two trees on the courthouse lawn will be lit up just like the ones right across the street at Angry Auction and in front of the barbecue place. So that will be lit up from then on.
Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any input?
Just to remind the mayor and council, this was an unbudgeted item, so in consultation with finance, just to make sure, to clarify that we do not have a line item allocated for this potential expense, and in terms of the installation or storage, unfortunately I don't know what that cost would be, so I can't comment as to whether or not it would be within the realm of, if y'all wanted to make any sort of decision.
Do you have a recommendation, Council?
I believe that there had been a desire through this council to see through certain phases. It's come upon us to commit and to fund, so beyond that, I do not know where the monies would come from, quite candidly. It would potentially be, it was taken out of any sort of surplus general fund monies, because with something of this significant size, I do not know if I could maneuver enough through different line items to amend the overall budget. Our parks budget is pretty much one of those that we would pull from, but as we discussed before, there's limited funds in there, but if it is a priority of council, the staff will do what we can do to present y'all with some resources as we can.
Now, can she give you an installation price?
Yeah. I called to talk to her today, but she wasn't there. Now, I will say this, as y'all recall, several years ago when we started this, looking into this project, I did not come to them and say we wanted this. I went to Lori, who does this professionally, and asked the question, what would look good in our little town? And I'll just tell you, initially she wanted to put lights on the Craig Burles and do something for the city jail, but the Craig Burles are not tall enough to support lights now, wouldn't look good. So this was her suggestion, and this is where that came from, and as the whole project is her suggestion. I'm not a light person, nor professionally know anything about lights, but I know they do a lot of things from Mobile, Alabama, over Lakeland Air and everywhere, so they know what you're doing.
Any questions?
Kurt? We're discussing phases in this project. Phase one, lights on top of all the buildings, plus the alleyway on still.
Now, let me, let me.
When will the alleyway be complete?
The alleyway will be completed Monday, and that's something I've got to get with Councilor Brandon. We're going to have to close up that road a little on Monday, and he's going to be here at eight o'clock, it'll take him an hour to do the rest of the project, and so he's going to start on work, and I'll stay on drive. And by the way, initially we were going to do poles, and there's not going to be any poles, there's clamps, and there's clamps on the building that clamp into the walls, it will not come down, and there'll be a pole that hangs down, and it'll be angled, and that's where that will be a home from.
And I understand we must start Monday, and we haven't equipped yet.
Well, no, this is, this is, this is the business owners. This is what the business owners have done. Now, you've already paid for the alleyway, you paid for that last year.
Well, we were requesting money.
We were requesting money for the lamp poles and a little piece of garland, which I showed them.
Okay, I thought you had that involved.
No, sir.
Okay.
So you've already paid for the alleyway, it's already taken care of. That was made last year.
Okay. Entertainer motion? Entertain a motion? Jack, I'm sorry.
What? I'm just here to represent the people of the community, and so that's the way we want to do, that's what we don't want to do.
Thank you, Jack.
All right.
Appreciate it. Committee updates, I asked at last work session that we quickly go over some committee reports, maybe catch everyone up to speed, plus myself up to speed, what's going on, and I understand from the minutes, and John, I apologize, I didn't get to watch your meeting yet, but we understand your point, the Economic Development Committee, and I believe Dr. Proctor was, and Kurt Raffel was members of that committee, can I get a report on that for us and the public?
Yes, sir. So this is one of many, what I consider to be exciting things that are going on in the community. This is the coming together of the city and the county, and the chamber has been very active in driving this forward, too. As y'all recall, we had an absence in that position, I believe it was last May. We had continued to accumulate those funds, both from the city and the county, and it accumulated enough funds really without any plan to move forward with any kind of process. So I began working, actually with some of the other leaders in the community, actually last August we started working on this, and came up with a plan to use a consultant to both establish kind of the structure of our economic development department, if you want to call it that, moving forward, making sure that we had full understanding of accountability and governance and all the things that are important when we're using these taxpayer dollars. And we also decided that we could be an interesting concept with the successes that we've had, using facilitators for the Chamber of Commerce, due to executive position, and for Mr. Douglas's hiring to engage them in a search for a position. And so the timing of this really revolved around the county's relatively sudden decision to move in this direction. Matter of fact, they actually were considering moving in their own direction, and Amory and I engaged them one-on-one, and were able to, after discussions with Mr. Landham, he drew up this joint resolution, and so we will be, we formed a committee on our side. As mentioned, it's myself, Brandon, and Kirk. On the county side, it's Becky Denny, Todd Payne, and Don Bogus, and we will be exploring a group of consultants. I've been interviewing consultants over the last, probably started interviewing the consultants in February or March, just independently representing the chamber. We have propositions from three different consultants, and even though Amory had stated we had made a selection, we have not. We do have a meeting scheduled actually tomorrow afternoon to begin our proceedings, and we've had one initial meeting with, a conference call with one of the consultants. It was our understanding that with no quorum from either member, no quorum from the council or the commission, that we could do that as long as no action was taken with respect to the Open Meetings Act. We saw, legal, the county attorney has told us that's not true, so all meetings henceforth will be announced and posted and so forth and so on. So it's a 120-day timeframe. Again, it's a very precursorary look at the potential for economic development in our community, with the potential for hiring. During that process, there'll be an evaluation of what the expectations of the city and the county are, and also some competitive look at what a person in that position for a community like ours would be paid, and then ultimately, we hope to, in a very open and transparent way, similarly to what we did when Brandon was hired, protecting the candidates, but also making sure that we handle it correctly, come up with a recommendation for hire, which again will be made ultimately by this council and the commission in combined fashion, so.
Kurt, you have another?
That's a synopsis, we're good.
Okay, well, the question I have, I read in the paper, Commissioner, someone said that we were going to match the county's funding. What's the status of that?
So that is, that was a quote from Mr. Landham, and he, his quote was that the city wanted to do that. That's not the way the information was conveyed to the group. The information was conveyed to the group that we may be willing to do that, depending on what the consultant told us. And it was made clear that during the discovery process and the design process, that those would be things that would be discussed and decided upon and be part of the budget process if indeed we felt like that was a viable alternative to live forward with. So in essence, I agree with what Phil was saying, but that's not exactly the way that it was conveyed to Mr. Jones and to Mr. Landham.
So did you straighten them out on that yesterday?
I have personally straightened them out on it, and if the council so wishes, I'm glad to discuss that with progress, but.
Well, the number the county paid up until now, presently that's going to the chamber, we paid a very small amount compared to the county, and so we're looking at at least, I think the county paid at least $60,000, $65,000 a year ballpark.
About $55,000 in '16, something like that.
So that was quite the chopper that we were willing to, when I, or wanting to.
We're willing to look at it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the next item, the Cost of Construction, Construction Aid Committee, I believe that was met up last month. Y'all have anything on that committee meeting?
I may speak just on behalf of Mr. Mayor. David Hall and I were able to meet with Chris Leger, the eternity on the day of bid opening for the tower.
if indeed we felt like that was a viable alternative to live forward with. So, in essence, I, I agree with what Phil was saying, but that's not exactly the way that it was conveyed to, to Mr. Jones and to Mr. Landham.
So, did you straighten them out on that yesterday?
I have personally straightened them out on it, and if you, if the council so wishes, I'm glad to discuss that with progress, but.
Well, the number the county paid up until now, presently, that's going to the chamber, we paid a very small amount compared to the county, and so we're looking at at least, I think the county paid at least sixty, sixty-five thousand a year ballpark.
About fifty-five and sixteen, something like that, too.
So, that was, that was quite the chopper that we were willing to, when I, or wanting to.
We're willing to look at it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And next, I have the Cost of Construction, Construction Aid Committee, I believe that was met up last month. Y'all have an update on that committee meeting?
I may speak just on behalf of Mr. Mayor. David Hall and I were able to meet with Chris Leger, the attorney on the day of bid opening for the towers that y'all will discuss, further into the agenda, beyond letting him know that there was a committee formed and that the expectations were to evaluate the current structure. Unfortunately, we've not been able to get together, kind of have any preliminary numbers to report back, or any suggestions.
Thank you. Pro, Roper Full Property Development Committee, Dr. Proctor and I believe Mr. Raffield.
And Kirk. Our chairman, our chairman of the committee, our former interim city manager, when he found he was on the agenda, he flew the country, he's in Cabo St. Lucas, or St. Lucas, or wherever he is.
Who is it?
Jim Looney was the original chair. So, that's, this is another very exciting process that's been going on, really, for quite some time now. And the last time that council, I believe council was informed about this was when we had a private citizen who had, was willing to donate some funds to do a feasibility study of the development of a park on the south part of town, and the Bill Perot Roper Hospital property. He indeed, he indeed did do that. They did do that, and that was with Cork Patterson Lee, a company that happened to do Woodstock, their downtown development. And during the discovery of, when they were looking at the evaluation of that property, they, they also identified some adjacent properties that may be available long-term for what would be a really gemstone of our downtown area, with a park, green space, possibly even an entertainment venue. I think we are now in the phase where the cost is going to be approximated, and there have been other discussions about private enterprise helping with those donations, and, and that's kind of where the status of that is. There is a formal presentation that's been done. I'm glad for that, to council and mayor. I think, I think it's a little, and again, I'm not the chair, and Dr. Robert Keller is also helping quite a bit with this. I think it's a little bit premature to introduce it to the public, but I think we're pretty close to being ready to do that. So, I can just tell you that it's been very professionally done, and it's been, would be a real, it could change our downtown area. It's already changed, and obviously, a lot of great things happening, but it could really make a big change in our downtown area. Yes, sir.
I guess just for me, you, Brandon, I've gotten this down, not really committee, but update on the bank purchase, a paper bank property. Y'all heard anything from that lately?
The last I spoke with Attorney Landham, Phil Landham was handling that on behalf of us, and the extent to my knowledge is that all the paperwork has been completed on our end. There was a boundary line agreement with a joint property owner that he executed. It was done last month. Because there's a buyout or some sort of merger with the bank, it's just a matter of getting through their process, but there appears to be no problems, it's just hung up and paperwork, so at this moment, no real status.
The ball is in the bank's.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, I reached out, since it had taken so long, and I was concerned about the buyout and having an impact, I did, actually, right after that was announced, I reached out to Carol Kaywood, and she assured me, she's the president of Wiltley, and then I did, I did reach out to her again late last week, and she had recently spoken to their operations person. She implied to me that there was no problem, it was just the, I guess, the red tape or bureaucracy of a buyout, and she did promise a callback, and as soon as I hear from, I'll talk to her again, I'll make sure, communicate that to our council and herself, where that stands.
Thank you. Okay. Under new business. Russian and Company, Lisa, would you introduce your guests?
We have, Councilman Mayor, we have tonight Sam Latimer with Russian and Company, and he's gonna present our annual audit for 2018.
Thank you for, for having me tonight. I'm going to go over the, the audit results for last year's audit, that's the year ended December 31st, 2018. We were out here with your staff for probably about four or five days, and we went through cash receipts, checks, all types of different transactions, and things went very well. Your staff was, was a very, very big help, a very capable financial staff. Lisa was a big help, and he was a big help, it grows up from one each other. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the opportunity to be your auditor this year. I've got a couple of things in front of everyone. You've got the presentation here, I'm gonna go through the presentation. Presentation is the highlights of this hundred-page document here. If there's any questions, we can, we can go to the book here, but I've, I've made some highlights here, and I'll go through those. There's a lot of detail in here. If you have trouble sitting or anything like that, you can always take a look at this, but I'm more than happy to go, go through that if you'd like. Lisa, do you mind clicking the? If you just press the down key. Yeah? Thank you. All right. Feel free to stop me, I don't want, so. Of course, you have your audit report, we call that the audit opinion, that's on pages one and two. The highlights of that three-page letter are the financial statements, our management's responsibility. Russian and Company, you're all, or that's us, we're, our responsibility is to express an opinion, so that's, we, we look at everything as material, so there, there could be small things that are off here and there, but materially, altogether, you, you have a fair opinion. The auditing standards we use are governmental auditing standards. You have a, what we call an unmodified opinion. That means we didn't have to change it for anything that was adverse or anything like that, so as for the, your statement of financial position is materially correct in our opinion. And that's where our letter on page one and two say. Do you click, click? Thank you so much. On pages fourteen and fifteen, these are your government-wide statements. That takes all of the activity and the assets liabilities of the city, of the Jasper, and puts them together. And so, there, there's a, what we call a balance sheet in a for-profit entity. So, assets minus liability, end up with your net position, which would be the same as retained earnings or equity in, in a for-profit entity. So, that's a full accrual basis, so all revenues are recognized when earned, and expenditures are recognized on an accrual basis. A little different than your general fund, which is on the, on the modified, we'll get that in a minute. But the statement of activities is on page sixteen, that's the results of the city. If you turn to page four of the presentation, this is your net position change the last three fiscal years. If you look all the way to the right, you see you have revenues over expenditures, that's what we would call net income on a, on a non-government entity, and you ended up with about a half a million dollars, five, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars total net. You can see that that is down from last year. However, last year, you had a large grant, I believe that there was some.
Generator.
Generator, excuse me. There were some generators that were purchased, and the, the difference is probably not, if you were to take that out from last year, I think it would be very similar to this year, not, not a huge change. Going through the different categories of your total net position, looking on the, the left-hand column there, you see that by, by year, that's your net investment in capital assets, that is all the infrastructure, the roads, the water system, altogether, net of any debt, that's, that's associated with, with those capital items, and the city has about twenty-one million, just over twenty-one million dollars invested in, in infrastructure. Your restricted net position, you've got about a million dollars, the majority of that is lost revenues. I don't, I, you didn't spend a lot of lost revenues, I believe that you've got a couple projects coming up over the next year, so look, see that probably go down next year. Total net position, that's total assets minus liabilities, about twenty-five, just over twenty-five million dollars in total. So, any questions there? The next slide is your general fund, these are just, just the highlights. Increase to about, your revenues, operating revenues, are just about three percent. Overall, some of the highlights there are the general sales and use tax, they're up about nine and a half percent, that's very, that, that's what we're seeing across all the governments we audit, we audit about fifty of them, fifty different governments, and sales tax are up. The economy's doing well, that, that's, that's a good sign. Your intergovernmental revenue is down, that, that is the grant revenue that I talked about in prior year, so that, that's down, about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Miscellaneous revenue is down about eighteen thousand dollars, I believe last year, there were a couple of vehicles that were, had to be reimbursed through insurance proceeds, that's, that's the reason for, for that decrease there. Fines and forfeitures are up about eight percent, about fourteen thousand dollars, so that's a good healthy sign, you're collecting more monies through your tickets, fines, and forfeitures. Expenditures are up quite a bit this year, about sixteen point four percent, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. The majority of that difference is your fire expenditures. And I think you all know that you, you bought a fire truck, and so that was about five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and that was financed through a capital lease. So, that's the majority of that difference there, that's up about fifty-six percent. Police, police expenditures decreased about four percent, they had some capital outlay in prior year, so that's to do that change. And street expenditures are up just a little bit, about eighty thousand dollars, about eleven percent. We like to, I like to show the unassigned fund balance, and that, unassigned fund balance is the, the fund balance that's at the discretion of management to use for what it, what is deemed necessary for operations. If you look at the two numbers there, under the unassigned fund balance caption, 2018 and 2017, you can see that they're both about one point seven million dollars, so they're, they're very similar. However, when I, what, what this ratio does, so that's about thirty-six percent of your expenditures, so we take your total expenditures and see how much of that is fund balance, so you could operate about a third of the year. However, that's a little off due to the increase due to the capital outlay, so if you, if you took that out, it'd be very similar to 2017, so you have, you really have about forty percent.
So, is there a standard, or, or, I mean, from, from your professional perspective, is that healthy, or, or are we pushing the limits and so forth, so, any of what I'm asking?
Sure, sure, there, that's a, that's a very common question, and a good question. There, there is no standard, there is a, a suggested, and that's suggested by the Government Finance Officers Association, and they suggest two to four months.
Okay.
And so, I would say that you guys are right in there, probably a little bit healthier, you're, you're at about five, and so I would think that that's, that's good. We have a lot of other governments that are two, two, one and a half, two, so I would, I think that's a, that's a pretty, pretty healthy balance.
Do you have any cities that have to borrow money to get the, get their tax, tax taxes?
We do. We do, we have cities that, that borrow on, on like a tan, so.
So, they'd be zero or less, negative, if they have to borrow the money?
Not necessarily, but I, I see what you're saying, yes, that, that would definitely not, when you're borrowing, you're not increasing fund balance, for sure, and you're also incurring interest expense, so that's, that's, that's never a good sign, and the problem with borrowing on your property taxes, if you do it this year, well, you probably won't have to do it next year, and it's, it's kind of that vicious cycle of a.
You're just like a credit card you can't pay off.
That's right. That's a very common problem, right? But yeah, so that, that's a good sign that you're not having to borrow these property taxes. I've got a couple of graphs here to kind of show everyone your general fund revenues and expenditures. You can see that large, if you look at last year, you are right at, right here. You're, in fact, your expenditures are just barely over your, and that's, that's about, that's about what you wanna do, you wanna kind of run the general fund at that level. You see that big spike? We all know that's the fire truck, so I, I wouldn't have any concern there, I think if you took that out, you'd be much closer to, to last year. Any questions on, on the graphics? So, that's, that's general fund revenues and expenditures. The next is, is fund balance. You can see that.
Let me ask a quick question. We financed a fire engine this week over several years, but you charged all the money to one year? All the funds?
That's correct. Well, and as you see, if you look, look back at the fund balance, these, these pages.
We waited till the end of the year to pay that, to, to actually bring it in, and we only paid three months' worth of payments on that.
But in the, in the general fund, not the statement of, we call it, the entity-wide statement?
I can answer, I can answer that. So, so that is operating revenues and expenditures. So, the, the lease would come in under operating, so that's not an operating item. So, for comparability across years, that item comes in after you have all your operating expenditures. Remember back on the slide with fund balance? This year, in seventeen, they were both about one point seven million, so you had no, no difference in your fund balance, even though you borrowed a half a million dollars and you spent half a million dollars. You see? But that can be a little misleading, that graph can be a little misleading. That's right.
With cash flow.
Yes, that's right.
Cash flow type person, so we worry about cash in, cash out.
That's right.
Usually, it works out.
Yes, and, and that would be a cash neutral item.
Look, a lot of times, we wait till the end of the year to purchase police cars or whatever else, just in case we can't afford to make the purchase.
That's right, just to make sure.
Right.
And that's right, you did a good job with that, and that, so that did not decrease your fund balance. So, that's a little misleading, but that's, that's why we're here to explain it. General fund, fund balance over the last three years, you can see sixteen to seventeen, there was a large increase, a lot of that had to do with the grant revenues, grant expenditures. You stayed there this year, not, not a lot of difference, you can see that gap, the gap between the, the two lines, that's your unassigned fund balance in the yellow, and your total fund balance up top. So, the, the difference between the unassigned and the total is probably restricted fund balance. You've got a little unassigned fund balance, that's a really technical item for, you've got some prepaid insurance, so some of that's in there as well. That's not, any questions there? Onto slide eight, this is your water and sewer funds. We've had a good year, up about four percent in total revenue, water sales are up about two, sewers up about two. Leachate, dump fees increased twenty-one percent, so that, that's good, about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars worth. Intergovernmental revenue decreased about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's the, the grant revenue that we talked about earlier in the overall picture, so that's down, you can see that's down ninety-six percent if you didn't have the, the grant this year. Sewer tie-ins are, are down a little bit. Operating expenditures are up a little bit, about six percent. Across those, you have sewer maintenance expenditures are down just a little bit, and then the last three, water treatment, wastewater treatment, and distribution are all up just a little bit, so a fifty thousand dollar increase in wastewater, fifty thousand dollar increase in water treatment and distribution. I looked at this before I, before I came, that, most of that is related to insurance salaries and the leachate expenditures, as that revenue goes up, your, your leachate expenditures go up as well. So, most, most of that's due to your operations. And I've got a graph on slide nine, this is your water and sewer fund operating revenues and expenditures. You can see that the blue line is kind of, kind of upticking, a slight uptick across sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, so that, that's healthy. Your operating expenditures, pretty much flat between sixteen and seventeen, and just that slight uptick this year. You can see that the difference between the two lines is your operating margin, so that's, that's, that's healthy, you're, you're, you're earning money in your water and sewer funds. And then you can see the, the line below, and green is your operating revenue, slightly down, but holding steady there around about a half a million dollars, so, on that line, a half a million dollars there. Any questions on the water and sewer graph? All right, so we, we also issued a report under government auditing standards, we're required to issue a report on internal control. So, we, we tested internal controls, we went along and tested some of your expenditures and, and revenues and stuff. We noted no material weaknesses and one significant efficiency, that efficiency is the same as last year, you actually dropped, I can't remember what the comment was last year, but it was satisfied, you, there's no longer had that comment, and the comment this year is a segregation of duties comment, and we don't expect you guys to. And we don't expect you guys to change. It, it has to do with your life, alcohol licenses and that receiving process. You just don't have enough employees to segregate that completely. So that's, that's more of a resource problem, and you, you really need three people to do it. We have two currently doing it right now. They're doing a great job. We didn't find anything wrong, but we just wanted you to be aware of that risk. Certainly, you don't go out and just hire someone just to segregate the duties of, of the alcohol licenses receiving. Any questions? Oh, also, we did not note any compliance issues with grants, laws, any expenditures of that nature. Slide 11. As your auditor, I'm required to make these communications to you. We, a lot of times, we do it in a letter. This year, we've got a, slides, which is a lot easier. But my responsibility as the auditor was to plan and perform the engagement to provide reasonable insurance of whether the financial statements were materially misstated. Uh, we examined that, basically testing, uh, and we assessed the estimates of accounting, and we agreed with management on those assessments and those estimates. Let's, we can go to the next, next slide. The accounting policies, um, most of those are in note two. That, if you're looking through the financial statements, there's a long note about how we handle things, how revenues are accrued, how estimates are handled, that, things of that nature. We agreed with management on all, all of those, how they're, how they're handling those. Uh, we did, we did implement a GASB statement. That's GASB 89, and that is, they have changed. GASB has now required that we do not capitalize interest to our capital projects. So that simplifies that process, so that makes that a lot easier. So if you have interest on lease, you don't have to put that up in your capital projects. That's actually a very nice change. We, we implemented that early, so we won't have to do that later on. Accounting estimates, as you know, financial statements require estimating certain things. Uh, I think the two larger estimates in your financial statements are appreciation of your capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. We looked at those, we believe those are reasonable. Corrected audit adjustments, any adjustment that we proposed to management, we, they agreed and made that adjustment. There were no uncorrected audit adjustments. If you'd like to go to the next. Happy to report, we had no disagreements with management. We were all able to come, come together as a team and, and make a decision on how things would be treated in the financial statements. We did that. No difficulties incurred. Management has given us a letter saying they've taken responsibility for the financial statements. And we did not consult any, uh, other management consultants during our engagement. And I have, I have already talked about the one audit finding. And that is the, oh, future reporting changes. I like to note some items that'll come up over the, the following years. This does not apply until December 31st, 2020. However, this is going to be a big statement. Lisa and I probably look next year, hopefully, for working with you guys, that will look at the leases that this may apply to. Basically, there's a large change at the way operating leases work currently. Currently, they're expensed. Going forward, once GASB 87 is implemented, there will be, they'll all be capital leases. So they'll all be on the balance sheet, they'll all be on the statement in that position. You know, you're looking forward to that, right? Yeah. I don't want to get too technical, but that's just kind of a heads up of what's coming, what's coming down the pipe. And I believe there's one more, which is GASB 88. Yes, that's right. And this will, this will have to be effective next year. Nothing's really changing, other than the disclosure. So the, the numbers in the financial statements won't change, but it has to do with the way your debt's disclosed. There's some additional disclosures on, um, what kind of property is, is backed by the, is collateral for the debt and that type of thing. So, um, we'll work through that. Happy to be your auditor. That's my contact information. Feel free to contact me anytime. If there's any questions, I'd like to open up for those. Feel free to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being, I would get a motion to approve this for us, so we can send this off to the DCA.
That's right, that's right.
And a motion, counsel? And a motion to approve the audit report and the audit of 2018. Got a second discussion? Being in on favor by show of hands? Thank you so much. That's you now.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
Be a pleasure working with you all, with you all. Thank you very much.
Will you kind of present that challenge?
I'll sit down. Maybe give me a introduction.
Do you want to clear your materials?
Just, just one more out.
We're the, we're the, oh, you didn't, I didn't mean. I need to look down. Okay, out of me, 2018, uh, chamber audit presentation. We just have. Okay. Oh, excuse me, change.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're not lucky enough to get away, get rid of it yet, so just, just one more.
We got, we got our audit approved, so I'm happy.
That's the important part. There's a, there's a letter here in front of you, and we, as your auditor, we were asked to perform some agreed-upon procedures. And we performed this procedure over a chamber of commerce, Pickett County Chamber.
Could you explain, I guess you're going to explain why to the public? We give them money.
Oh, yes, yes, of course. Yes, the, the, yes, I was, I'm sorry.
I made, I made the, before y'all apologized.
No, no problem, no problem. Thank you. Uh, the hotel motel funds are given to the chamber to expend those funds. And we were engaged to make sure that those funds were being spent on the appropriate items and to make sure all that money was spent timely. And I'll go through those, those procedures individually. And so we reviewed a sample of invoices that were, uh, expended using the city's money. And so all the expenditures in that sample that we tested, we didn't find anything wrong with them. They were spent on trade and tourism as they should have been. So that's, I'm happy to report that. We also noted there's a, there's a, you're required to spend the revenue for hotel motel during a certain time period, and that time period was met. And so that, that's another item there. We did find one thing that we, we think can be improved upon, the, the chamber's allocation percentages for joint costs, such as salaries and overheads, such as the building. That policy is not written. Um, we tested that, and the allocation appeared reasonable. And so we didn't find anything wrong with it, but we, as, we like to see a plan for those expenditures. For instance, the building, we'd like to see that divided out between the county and the city for joint costs, and see that allocated based on some, some reasonable percentage. But again, we looked at, we looked at items, and we didn't find anything wrong with the allocation that, that we reviewed, so.
So building expenses are covered through block? You, you pay building expenses with block?
Some of the hotel motel.
Are you tied in a hotel motel expense?
That's right.
Are you tied in with tourism?
Trade and tourism.
That's just kind of, kind of difficult to do, or otherwise, I think we'd be able to do it in the city. But we make sure we get it into the hands that can spend it more wisely than, than we can because of the requirements.
Yes, sir.
Has the chamber been made aware of this as of yet? You know, these findings?
Yes, yes. Oh, and I'll also note that we did this engagement last year, and the findings are the same as, as last year. So we didn't, we didn't find anything last year, but we, we had the, the comment of the allocation percentage. So that's something that, that needs to be.
And last year, we also did not have a written agreement in place, and we corrected that.
That's correct. And actually, that's my next, my next, my next item here. No, 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 no problem. Thank you. Uh, the, usually, you, you should have a contract between the city and the chamber. I believe that's what you were referring to. In 2018, I think that got, that overlooked. And so our comment is to try to fix that going forward. And I believe there's been a, an agreement signed for 2019. Is that, is that correct? And one last item on the reconciliation of, of timing of the hotel motel expenditures, the, the timing of expenditures were, were appropriate. Meaning, they didn't hold any monies from 17 to spend in 18, or 18 to spend in 19. And so that, everything that we looked at appeared to be our timing.
Do you have the amount of money that was transferred to change from the city?
I don't have that.
Very important.
12,000. Between 10 and 12,000.
A quarter, yeah.
That number, if you look in your, I can give you the 20, 2018 number.
Just, just for public information.
Uh, 53,666.
Okay. And you, you, you don't do the county government, do you?
No, sir.
I was kind of curious as to how much the city transfers to the chamber versus what the county. But we have a lot of it in the city, but there is quite a bit in the county. You've been 35 million rentals, et cetera.
Quite a bit more, as you mentioned. The county did do an audit and found, um, someone who was in arrears, and so as they're making that up, it's, it's a lot closer than it had been, so.
And the past hasn't knocked.
That's great.
Any questions, counsel?
Lisa, you mentioned that an audit is required. I don't think that's.
It's, it's required by the state.
Not every year on, on hotel motel tests. Can you help with that?
I thought it was required every year.
Now, in, in our audit, we look at that as well. I, I think the concern here was if, if that was being carried out on the other end. And I don't, no, I don't believe there's a requirement to, to do that every year, but if there is concern, then you can definitely.
How many years can you go between?
Well, um, I, I think it depends on your agreement. And our agreement does, um, support that the city can do it as often as they want. But I think in the past, we've done it internally.
Yeah.
And, and there is additional cost, I'm assuming, and it's just one of those things that.
Who audits the chamber?
I thought I had read in the state law that you had had.
And that, and that could be true. I don't know off the top of my head.
Chambers are private, not for profit, so.
Well, you're dealing with public money. We felt years ago it was a good idea to.
Oh, just to be clear, we don't mind being audited, but in the past, the, the staff had done it and had been satisfactory. We're, we're fine doing it this way, just an additional cost to the, to the city.
Well, you count a lot of money, and it usually has to be counted somewhere, so that's why we do it. So if you want to change that, you can with three votes.
Right.
We, we do.
We didn't get to vote on whether we were audited this year by the House.
We, we audit it without the practice.
Now, we, we, we do, as an auditor, we do like to see the city internally audit that, and that will require those expenditures being turned over to the city and.
It's quite more difficult if you do it, we do it that way.
That, that's right.
We started a few years ago and had a lot of unacceptable stuff, while we went with turning it over to you guys.
And we, we do a lot of this, so.
But let me ask you this before you leave.
Yes, sir.
And it's easy to misspend those monies because they're so specific on what they have to be spent. Uh, if we were audited by the state, would it be DCA or, or the sales tax division?
Uh, this would fall under DCA.
Okay. And that's not a real pleasurable event, is it?
No, you, you don't want to get caught, you, you don't want to spend restricted monies on the wrong.
I would like to know on this, just in case they wanted to.
So the process, the DCA won't audit unless there's a complaint, and then they investigate the complaint.
They have to call.
I know the process, I'm just trying to help inform the group, so. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Go, get back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Planning Commission report on water. If you want me to slow so Brandon won't beat you up here.
Prime Minister, could I join in?
All I have is planning commission report, no other details available on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, Sunny Underwood and I would like to give a report on behalf of the Planning Zone Commission. In regards to item C on your agenda, there'll be two specific applications discussed this evening. One application that's next item under D has been requested by the applicant at the table. So for purposes of tonight, there'll be essentially two reports from the Planning Zone Commission. In your packets, you'll, you'll find that there's an applicant, Mr. Mayor, I can go through one, and then if the applicant's here, they can speak, or if you want me to go through the both, and then.
Go one at a time, please.
Okay. Uh, the applicant, Davenport Group Investments LLC, 634 South Main Street. Uh, there was a request from rezoning from residential to C1 originally, and then speaking with the applicant, it appeared C1A would be a more appropriate rezone request. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their May night meeting, whereupon the chair had called the, the public hearing to order. And Sunny Underwood and I provided a brief synopsis that the applicant had requested this rezone to operate the real estate license, due to the fact that this particular property was not being used as a home-based business, it was being used as a just real estate office. There was the requirement to request a rezone, therefore.
Can I have that addressed again?
Yes, sir. It's 634 South Main Street.
And can I have the, the name of the people, the owner?
It is, uh, Davenport Group.
Now, who owns the property now?
I apologize.
Again. The Davenport Group. Who, who, what property are we talking about?
It's.
Give, give me a, next to Walton Gumball, what's the street of, what, who owned the property when we threw up?
Dr. Darnell House.
Thank you. Dr. Darnell. 634, then rest.
There we go. Thank you, sir.
You may have owned the Dr. Darnell House. That's the property next to Jensen Heat and Aire. Right on the edge of the corporate limits of Jack from George. Right in the middle of residential areas, so go ahead.
Yes, and so by virtue of that, there were no public contenders to support or oppose. However, the Planning Zone Commissioner, Martha Poole, had provided comments that she had heard some reservations from neighbors. Uh, there were no further comments, and the chair called for a, a vote. It was a one-on-one with Commissioner Poole to not rezone. Commissioner Coates wanted to move forward. Uh, the chair did vote to break the tie, to move the matter forward as a recommendation to you all for rezone. So with that.
Okay, so we had two, one in the tie and split. I, I wouldn't wear this, I'm trying to catch up, guys.
So beyond that, that is, that is all we have in regards to this application. I believe they are here if you all would like to speak to the applicant or any questions.
Okay. Counsel, do you want, like to hear from our guests? Please, come forth. We'd like to hear your presentation and, uh, because once you rezoned this commercial, you can actually put a committee for it if you wanted to, so. What you're asking for.
But hope not, that.
Well, it is, and that's.
Can I speak?
What you're asking.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Rachel Davenport. Um, so we are requesting to rezone it because it is, we, we bought the property because we love it, because it feels like home, it's historic, we love the trees, and we want to be able to work out of that with just our team, so it wouldn't be a, like an open.
Brokerage.
Brokerage, just for our team. And so it will have only curators working out of it. We are not planning on making it look like commercialized. We're keeping the trees, we're keeping the white picket fence. We want to keep that look and feel of it. We're not.
Those sign up?
It will not be illuminated, so it'll be a small sign. You know how the front porch is? I don't know if you, yeah. So we just want to have one hanging there, kind of on the porch. So it won't be one on the street, it'll just be.
You, you already purchased the property?
Yeah.
Before you rezoned it?
Yes.
You live there?
We stay there on occasion, so we do stay upstairs. Yeah, yeah, but we don't, we felt that it would, I guess we could have kept it maybe home, like the residential or business, but we felt that it might, since we are operating a business out of it, even though we do on occasion stay there.
Technically, it's a satellite office. Our primary office is based out of Woodstock, but we're also the number one real estate team in Pickens County. We closed on 13 million last year in this county, doing 14 homes between Interstate 20 and Tennessee. You know, we love Pickens County. Every week when we host enough and house, we ask the 16 years neighbors for donations for the homeless, and pretty much every Wednesday now, I'm dropping off at, you know, Georgia Community Action, which is awesome because that place had no food when I first started doing this.
Stay on those stairs. So you're coming for this, counsel, you went for the planning commission, and you want to change the piece of property on South Main Street from residential to commercial?
Yes, sir.
Questions, counsel?
Do you have another office in Pickens County?
No, we have an office in Cherokee County.
In Woodstock?
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael Williams' office that we work at.
And are you currently running a real estate office out of the South Main Street location?
So we use it, and we do let on occasion some of our agents just come by and use an office, just because we, it's kind of a home office right now.
And how long have you been doing that?
Uh, what, going on a year now?
Maybe a little under.
Yeah, we had to get approval from Keller Williams for the office before we could come in front of y'all.
Did you have a business license in Pickens County, all great at that location?
We do now, mhm, yeah.
We were told by Sonny that we need to get the business license when we started this process, so we went and got it.
How about when you started your office, did you not think to ask for a license then?
Everything was based out of Cherokee County because it's ran underneath a broker's name.
Yeah, so that's what we wrote, our broker holds a business license, and since all the business is ran under a brokerage's name, since we're not a brokerage, kind of like every other real estate agent that works under a brokerage, not required to get a business license. And then they said with the zoning part, we would need to have a business license.
Any other questions? Counsel? Kurt, John?
Is that what's the only historic registration?
Not to my knowledge. When we bought it, it was not registered under, we had not, we had a registration.
The C, is it C1A or C2A?
The request would be for C1A.
C1A. So there are buffering requirements for that? Are you aware of that?
No.
I am not.
So buffering, it can be trees, or fences, or hills, or balls, or all sorts of things, and, you know, I'm not completely familiar with the zoning ordinances and how they all break down. It's been quite a bit of transition right now for us, and I don't see that your property is buffered, but that's something that's one of the requirements as well.
Yeah, we went with that based on Sonny's recommendation after explaining to him what it was that we wanted to do.
So that is a little more easy to swallow, I guess would be one way to say it, rather than C2A or C2, which could be any of our commercial things, so that does restrict you some, but there are still quite a lot of businesses that you can do on there other than real estate.
Okay.
And South Main Street is obviously a gear to my heart, even though I'm not directly, but there are conflict based on the distance between our homes. We do take pride in that being a historic residential area that continues to evolve. And just being frank, my concerns are that if we let y'all do this, then there are several houses around there that immediately, may or may not, I'm not having a conversation with those owners that may or may not decide to make their businesses commercial as well. And there are plenty of places in our county, city and county where offices can be located. This is a hard thing for me to swallow, because your wife and I have prior relationship, professional relationship, and so this is a tough, tough decision for me. That's all I have.
You can add that with it.
Sonny, do you have a C1A qualification?
No, I don't have it with me.
Counsel, you're in your packets, you'll have the actual permitted uses by district. So just kind of walk through, if you have any, it's the fifth column, reading left to right. So the C1A would be what's the applicant's requesting, and you'll see what's the used by right categories along with any sort of conditional use permits that you all could grant. Should be just a few pages just behind.
Any other questions, counsel? Entertained a motion? Entertained a motion? Be in no motion, and I thought it fails for lack of a motion. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Enjoy your party. Okay, the next item is item D.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you got, you got that, that's right.
We got a couple more items, sir. We've got one more applicant in attendance, I believe, with us tonight.
Would you do me a favor in the future? When you have a planning, I have to look over this really quick, I have not a clue what was coming towards that. Could you do an item A, B, C, and just one that the counsel and I could see?
Absolutely.
Because I've got probably 15 and 20 minutes to catch up.
Yes, sir.
And I feel like I'm in the dark. Thank you.
And just beyond this application, we will have another item for me to discuss, but in regards to this application, there was a public hearing held for the Planning Zone Commission on the same evening, Thursday, May 9. And you'll see in your packets, it was a request for a rezone and annexation of a property. I've been referred to it as a property behind QT, Manitoulin LLC, about two acres or so.
On Campro, on Campro, between the QT, Quick Trip, and the old Honda camp.
Yes, there's, someone refers that property to something, and I'll have to refer to Ronnie or Sonny, but I think everyone's got it, but nonetheless...
Also known as the Logan Property.
There we go, there we go. I will say that the chair called the public hearing to order. The staff gave a brief report that the applicant was requesting to come into the city to utilize city services and better market property. It was essentially a lateral rezone or zone request of when you annex a piece of property from one jurisdiction to another, you have to try to get some sort of lateral zoning. For this request, it was advised C2 was requested zoning. A copy of the permitted C2 uses was provided to the applicant, since they had not been identified used specifically. So with that, the applicant had stated that he could work within the C2 parameters, and the chair called for the applicant forward, gave a brief explanation, and called for vote, and it was 2-0, the chair not needing to vote, as it was affirmed to recommend to y'all move forward.
And prior to that, property had used as a truck shop and next to the concrete company and in commercial or industrial back before the, in the, near the, or near the city, it was county commercial, probably. Unofficially county commercial, but it's a county that has zoning here in that period. With that, counsel...
And I believe Mr. Mayor and counsel, the applicant is here as well as Mr. Mr. Schaus.
I think, and he probably, David, did you want to say something to mess this up?
Nothing.
Okay. But entertain a motion? Motion to approve this annexation? Dave, you might need to say something, I can't get a motion. Give you an opportunity.
I just, we did change the use for it. We have a 25-year-old business stakehouse type restaurant that's pending contract with us, 194 locations in the southeast, and they're ready to sign a contract on it, but...
Thank you. Let me say something, counsel, I don't know what's going on, but this property is not controversial. It continues to the City of Jasper's commercial properties. I know Mr. Schaus has had an issue with the city zoning before, but we can't hold that against him for something as a government, for something that's happened in the past. We have to behave accordingly and act within the rules, regulations of zoning in the City of Jasper. We've never denied an annexation because of personality conflicts, and I would like for that not to happen again. Entertained a motion? This is governed in its worst. It fails for lack of a motion. Mr. Schaus and I apologize to you for that.
It's fine, I held off with that other litigation, but...
I've never seen anything like it. Seen a few dollar fights with song and all, and a few others. Thank you. Have you ever seen, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, the only other item that was not an application, however, there's been some interest in terms of zoning ordinance to look at incorporating particularly use in it, not to regulate the use, but just to, or not to enforce the use or the use, but just to identify the use. It was silent under the definitions as well as where it would fit. Specifically, the ordinance of incorporating vape shop into the definitions, you'll see in your packet, and Mr. Mayor will know if you want me to read the incorporation of the definition, highlight the vape shop, it mirrored state code, along with some other jurisdictions.
You're changing ordinance, please read it.
Yes, what we do...
Is this being considered the first reading?
I believe after Mr. Pickett and I have discussed, this will essentially be the first reading of the zoning ordinance. Yes, vape shop, being deemed business whose principal conduct line for retail sales is alternate nicotine products or vape juice composed. For the purpose of this section, alternative nicotine products are further than any products or devices that employ an electronic heating element, power source, electronic circuit battery, or other electronic chemical or mechanical means to produce a vapor that contains nicotine in the person containing from the device, including electronic cigarettes, electronic cigars, electronic hookups, electronic bombs, and electronic pipes, or they're manufactured, distributed, marketed, or sold as an electronic cigarette, electronic cigar, or electronic pipe. For the purpose of this section, vape juice refers to any liquid that contains compounds containing pharmaceutical grade vegetable glycerin, propylene, by called nicotine, food grade flavoring, and water, and can be used for vaping by means of an alternate nicotine product. For purpose of this code section, principles shall mean that alternative nicotine products, vape juice, or others constitute at least 25% of the business's aggregate retail. And Mr. Mayor and counsel, part of the permitted and conditional uses as well, staff merely took the liberty of, at the very end of that section, of permitted and conditional uses by district, taking vape shop as identified in the definitions as just a use, so up under video sales and rentals, order treatment facilities, it was going to be the inclusion of vape shop just above wholesale trade warehouse. This is, Mr. Mayor and counsel, something that if you all want to incorporate a change for the next time, but basically we're looking at having this a used by right in the C2 district and the industrial district. That's, that's the extent of this. So once again, used by right means that in that particular zoning district, that business entity could come in by right in those two zoning categories. If it's not in that zoning category, it would have to come before y'all for some sort of rezone, and you could potentially look at having it as a conditional use, however y'all see fit.
And I'll let's clarify it in your writing, is it correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, that we consider our first reading, and we'll vote on the actual change next month. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Sonny, I believe we staggered over your head, I've got you for item E, alcohol license, request for continuation, Fanta's Cafe is what we added tonight, would you like to explain to the council what's going on?
We just want to extend the request for continuation.
For their alcohol license? You want, you want to tell Lisa about this, right?
In other words, we don't have, we don't have the...
Fingerprints.
Fingerprints back.
Okay. So is that our fault or theirs?
We have to assume that it's theirs.
Well, we don't have them, we could be either or, well, I'm getting at, even though we don't have them, whether it's ours or theirs, we can't move forward with the state unless we have the fingerprints, bitch. So I just want to clear that for the council. So basically, we're asking for the knowledge and to vote to continue because Fats, I understand, is coming out of some bankruptcy issue or out of business, and they're having to get a new manager or new ownership, all this going on? I'm just guessing.
And the lady that was, was taking them through all this stuff has since left Fats.
Okay.
And that's the, that really is basically the reason for the continuation, because she was, she was the one that was going to put it in her name, and now she doesn't want to do that.
They're not have a corporation?
Yeah.
Can't they file for it as everyone else does, if not locate inside the city, you don't have to get it?
They have to list the person that they are going to designate to be the person to receive all suits and...
Okay, yes, yes, okay.
And so now, the lady that's, that lives here in fact...
They've changed to someone else, that's all it boils down to. With that, counsel, entertain a motion for continuation of the Fats of application for alcohol license? Got a motion?
Second.
That's second. Discussion. Ben Alfer, will you show answers? That's you now.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, 69 North Main Street encroachment agreement. Brandon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, son. Mr. Mayor, counsel, in speaking with City Attorney Bill Pickett, we've identified the new owner, Ms. Brandy Strong, who's here with us this evening. She has approached us in terms of how to improve access to her building. Currently, on that side of the Main Street, all of the shops from her location down to Senova's Bank are essentially a no-step entry off the sidewalk. She does have a step, a rather large step, that she would like to essentially remove and replace with a ramp. There's a detailed construction drawing in the, in the packet where she had incorporated that into her plan set when she was doing the remodeling. Our building department, along with the farm marshal, had stated that the rise of approximately 11 inches would not be detrimental, and the gradual sloping, she is proposing to incorporate a handrail system so that if you are walking along the sidewalk, you would essentially continue walking up the ramp. There is sufficient room to go away from the ramp, clearance of five foot or more, to maintain ADA compliance along the sidewalk. And with that, Mr. Mayor, part of what the city attorney and I discussed was we could issue some sort of temporary in nature type of agreement where we would not be asking and giving her carte blanche to do a permanent encroachment, but essentially stating that at any point in time that the elected body... stating that at any point in time that the elected body desires it to be removed...
I must understand it first before we say approve it, because what I'm looking at, and I tried to understand this the other night during the work session. Counsel, do you have any questions before I have a question?
What's the overall width for that? Five feet? Is that, is that, can I cut off?
From the exterior of my building out, you're looking at four feet, because I have another foot within my doorway that will give the proper five-foot landing needed for...
Or some landing's five feet.
Correct.
Okay. With that, how many sidewalks going to be left?
Uh, approximately five feet, I think, is what, Randy, six feet?
Yeah, because it's ten foot from my building to...
Now, we're talking about where the trees are. We're talking about from the marble track that, outside the tree area. That is the walking area. Sidewalk's not that large. When you put your sidewalk, you put there, you allow at least half of that using up the sidewalk. Okay, counsel, sure to see.
Make a motion. We approve this request. What type of basis?
Do you realize what this is doing to the sidewalk?
Yes, sir. What I realize is that this is going to allow anyone with disabilities to access this facility.
Well, can't you, she also owns our building with that. Ramp is white.
I would have to rip out all the forejoists to do that.
We might have to destroy a sidewalk.
It's a wooden.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just, I got a motion. I didn't mean to question your motion. I got a motion on the floor.
Well, I'd like to confirm my motion.
Okay.
If I may. You were asking for what type of basis? A temporary, but a...
Yeah, Mr. Pickett and I talked about...
No, whoa, 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 whoa. I said that it might be able to be done, and I told Brandon that it might be able to be done through either a license agreement or either an encroachment agreement, but I would not suggest an encroachment agreement, what we call an encroachment in real estate is permanent. And, um, is that not what I told you?
Yeah.
And, uh, I know, I hadn't seen the drawing until right now, but the sidewalk out there, it's the same way with my building. Um, the worst place in town is the carriage house, walking up that place. I don't know whether it could be accomplished by a little bit of pour of concrete on the seal of the building. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know, know that. I, I, but I didn't realize that what we were talking is you're going to take up five foot, or four, eight foot of the sidewalk.
I got a motion. You want to finish that motion?
Motion on a license agreement for this accessible.
I have a motion. Do you accept?
May I say something else?
Let me finish my second. Motion is second. Do you accept?
Can we, can we table this in the middle of the motion, or do we need to, um...
My motion would have to fail first.
You, yeah, we gotta go, we gotta do that and start the discussion. That's what we'd like to do. Got a motion on the floor? Motion fails for lack of a second. Now, we're there. We can continue discussing this.
I mean, I'd like to go out, and I did go and look, and I would like to go out either as a group or individually and look at what the other options are, and actually, I did not see this drawn beforehand. It takes almost my time for that, but, um, and measure it and look at it, and measure it and look at it, and see what it was, will look like, and, um, and, um, and so, we need a motion to table this.
Uh, well, we failed, but there's no reason she keep bringing, bringing back...
Big book back on the agenda.
What you did, all this you asked for, come back again, and then we talked about taking up that...
But the fact that if somebody else bought the building later on, because I personally own the building right now, it wouldn't be destruction to the sidewalk and everything else. It was just going to be a...
And this is below your...
It, it will, just point of reference, Mayor and counsel, because of going through the building review process, it should not have the hindrance on any sort of CO upon final permitting. The reason why they were able to begin with the remodeling is because, we said from a code perspective, because it does not exceed fifty-person, the assemblage threshold, there was not a requirement for this completion. This was a requested action by staff to the elected.
Okay, let me add to this for your benefit. When we were building the sidewalk, that was quite the dilemma, leaving more furniture going down the grade than we had, and we weren't favorably leaving the stoop, but there was not many options because of the grade that we would have had if we'd have brought it up to you and then come back down to shortnesses that we had. And I just vaguely remember that once he mentioned to me Thursday night that there was a stoop there. Uh, and, and I told the council at the meeting, I recall the wars that we had when they asked the coke machines to be removed down to keep them obstructing the sidewalk. And the goal was to have unobstructed flow, and probably spent three-quarter million dollars to re- use the side, redo the sidewalk. Here's something that I would ask you to look, to bring to council. You're going to have certain times of day when you're going to need handicap accessible?
My hours will, I'll be open from eight AM...
Never mind. I thought you said, you said, you said you were meeting there as a, a group. Okay, assembly. You said something about assembly. I'm going to withdraw my, what I almost said. Anyway, that is said. Thank you for being here tonight. I believe you'll be able to, counsel, you can repetition the council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, item G, cruelty to animals, ordinance amendment. Bill, Lonnie, I'm not committing.
Okay, Mayor, we totally agree. Mayor and counsel, back in October of last year, we did an amendment concerning the outside temperature if dogs are in a vehicle and it's seventy degrees or more outside, then the city police officers, item control, could take measures to remove them or whatever. This has started already this year. We've already had several calls. The police department is asking for a little more guidance, so I've talked to Mr. Pickett, and he's come up with a very simple addition to the amendment. It just states that a violation of section fourteen dash twelve shall carry a maximum penalty of a fine of whatever the council wants to satisfy then. And this will give the police officers, I don't want to trouble officer, especially the police officer, because they write the citations. Uh, this will give them a little more guidance, uh, as far as when they can, when they can write citations, and, and the maximum penalty.
Okay. Would you read that from me, please?
It just states that additional, addition to chapter fourteen of article one, add section fourteen dash fourteen, add the following. Fourteen dash fourteen, cruelty animals. A violation of section fourteen dash twelve shall carry a maximum penalty of a fine of so ordained that the mayor and council signature.
Okay.
Bill, what's the...
We, we passed an ordinance, to be real simple, but we passed ordinance and then put them...
We don't have... People aren't saying, what's that state? What's the state?
Well, it depends. See, this is, we, we wanted to do it in the form of a misdemeanor, and if you get into cruelty animals, you can get into the penalty. But then you gotta, then you gotta go get a state one. And that's not what we intended, or that's what I don't think y'all intended to start with, and we just didn't have a penalty in for it, so we made a pass.
Okay.
What's your recommendation?
Anywhere fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars.
Your question, this will address an original one-time fine. Is there a need, in your opinion?
No, no, it's a continuing, big continuing thing.
Correct. Because there, if we have an offender that has two offenses, is there a reason for us to make a motion for an increase in the fine in the second and third counts?
No, no, no. Well, well, yeah, you can do that. You can do it for the second, but fine, you can do...
You start having to call them, what person, maybe the dog, when you call them. Uh, have, have, has anybody looked into neighboring, neighboring towns to see what their ordinance and what their fines is?
Yes, uh, I think the chief has, but...
The, uh, we looked them up. Cherokee County Marshal's Office handles that, and they were like three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Called my contact down in Canton, it was six hundred dollars, and I went, wow, that's, that's pretty stiff. Uh, that's what they have. It basically gives us a toll to charge the city ordinance, other than, because someone made a bad decision to bring their dog, sort of lock him up like those set of felony warrants. City ordinance, you're, it's heard in city court, pay the fine, and move on. Now, Brandon, if the dog is besieged or something like that, then we're going to have to take that one.
Well, I'd like to make a... Play before you dig, John. Just a little bit of trivia. DUIs, the charge for DUI sometimes is so expensive and so outrageous, people keep pleading guilty to it. I think we should allow people to plead guilty to a cruelly animal by leaving their car when they run into the Walmart, so that we can deal with them in courts in Jasper, Georgia, instead of making it so extensive that they don't want to deal with us, they want to take it to superior court. So, keep that in mind when you, Bill?
I'm just going to say a reason why I left the claim a maximum fine. Now, that gives also, not only does it put a max threshold, but it also gives the judge juris, uh, legal aid to do anything less than that.
Or more, after, after what's legal.
Whatever you said.
But I, I, I'd recommend this, counsel, use something with common sense, because anyone could make a mistake, not that they could leave the car, but I think a fine, you know, fifteen dollars is almost too little to eat and poop with a seatbelt violation, but that's my advice to the council. I, I shouldn't be debating. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say on the first offense, fifty bucks. Second offense, a hundred bucks. Third offense, a hundred and fifty bucks.
By that time, they're being jailed with it. That'd be extremely cruel to them, but we're trying to avoid it. I think, I think that rate that John gave would get their attention and make them come to court, or pay the fine, or whatever the case may be. And, and, I need a second. Got a motion, a second. Discussion? Ben Alfer, vote for show hands. Thank you, counsel. That's you now. Thank you, Lonnie. Uh, item H, sanitation truck. Brandon?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, as you may or may not be aware, the current operations of the sanitation department is utilizing one eleven-yard rear loader vehicle that's twenty-twelve, fifteen degrees old. It has been having some issues of late. As of last week, we had to do some emergency repairs. In my tenure in four months, I know of, I think, we spent in excess of three thousand already. And so, what I'd like to do is to present to you all tonight two options moving forward to, to lease, purchase, um, some equipment that would enable the department to run more efficiently. Now, Mayor, Mayor and counsel, we did budget lease payments of approximately six months for this fiscal year to account for approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollar purchase. The reason that's important is we do have three quotes for what I'm considering option one, which is essentially doing, purchasing the same type of vehicle we're currently utilizing, about a ten or eleven-yard rear loader. The range is from a hundred twenty-two thousand to a hundred forty-eight thousand. An option two is, I believe, a viable option, so much as we, we looked at our current operations and how we function as a department. And this other option enables us to purchase an eight-yard rear loader, a smaller, more compact vehicle, provides more maneuverability in tighter places. The compaction ratio between what that allows versus a ten or eleven-yarder that we currently use, both of which does not require a CBL driver, we lose about one tonnage of compaction. However, in concert with that eight-yarder, staff would be recommending us to move on purchasing what is considered a parkhand. You basically take a device that's about fourteen thousand dollars and you put it in the bed of a pickup truck, which we would also like to purchase, an F-three-fifty chassis that would allow for more weight to be onto that. It'd be about a six-yarder. There would be no compaction, however, this device sits on the bed of the truck, which has even more maneuverability in our community. Currently, we are utilizing Chevrolet fifteen-hundred, just exposed trash bags, and so what I would like to do is explore that option. The cost of the eight-yarder, we were unable to get three quotes, however, I do have one of one oh one seven seven three, and another quote of one oh two seven hundred. That is for the eight-yard rear loader. The F-three-fifty chassis with installation of the parkhand would run right at forty thousand. So, what I was trying to do was look at the intent from last year's fiscal budget of looking at a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of lease payments, and I think option two enables us to get a couple of new pieces of equipment to allow the department to function as they are now, a little more efficiently.
Did I understand you say two of the small ones versus one?
Well, what would happen is it would be one eight-yard, it looks like a trash truck. Just take the trash truck we have now, and it's just smaller. Then what would happen is the forty, that was a hundred thousand. The forty thousand is an F-three-fifty pickup truck, and they install a device.
And what was the total of that item?
That was forty.
With the truck and the compact?
Yes, sir.
Forty thousand? You get the whole thing, forty thousand?
Twenty-six for the, the chassis on state contract, and about fourteen thousand.
So, you're going to put two on the road, less expensive than buying the larger truck?
Well, for full disclosure, Mr. Mayor, we did find a ten-yard rear loader patnack for one twenty-two. However, the option that we discussed with finance was that we have monies allocated for lease payments of a hundred forty. So, I would recommend us looking at option two, if that's something that y'all will consider.
If you will put your, first of all, counsel, any questions? Discuss this before we call for a motion?
Lisa, how does it look? It's a little over one forty, not a whole lot. Will we be able to solve it?
Yeah, especially with this financing. It will be fine.
So, the smaller truck, how much?
To do that. Yeah.
The...
How many yards?
The eight-yarder, which is basically the strong, is about a four-ton compaction. We get about five-ton compaction currently.
And the little truck?
The little truck has no compaction, however, it's a six-yard. And what happens is we would back it up to this trash truck that's in the shop. It would dump in, we could compact that, get back on the road, all while leaving the eight-yarder continuing to be on the road, rather than they have to stop, take, put back in, and get, take it to off.
And it'll give a compact, we'll pick up fourteen versus ten, or four, or twelve.
Okay, you, you can discuss this with the garbage crews?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I will ask for you to make an outline for a motion and see if I can get a second to it.
Okay, yes, sir. I would, I would be requesting for council to authorize staff to move forward with option two, enabling us to purchase one eight-yard rear loader. The current quote from Waste-Built New Way Diamondback of one hundred, one thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three thousands, along with the, included in that purchase from Waste-Built would be for the F-three-fifty chassis with the parkhand installed at approximately forty-one thousand dollars. Forty, sorry, it was fourteen, forty thousand.
So, are we talking about a hundred and forty or a hundred and one thousand?
A hundred and one plus the forty, a hundred and forty total.
I'm, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. And my spot fault. You'll bring me that.
Yes, sir.
I have a picture made.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How much would, okay. That's, there, that's, I see, I see what the truck, that's what I mean, that's, well, that's, that's a compact, that's a compact.
This one does not have a compactor, it does-
We're paying a hundred and forty thousand, and you don't have a compactor?
Yes, this is-
That's the wrong-
Okay, that's, that's when you're asking for the option part.
This is a hundred, and this is forty.
I'm all backed up here, yeah, I'm just kinda, kinda confused, I like that plan. Just, not to endorse my hipster anymore.
Thanks, sir.
Anything else, I got that request, entertain a motion.
I'm with the motion we've set, uh-
Option two.
Option two. And all the details will be given to Lisa for the record-
Correct.
-that you just covered.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion, a second. Discussion? Being on all fair book with your hands? That's unanimous? And counsel, I hardly ever do this one. I like to, kind of recess. Thank you, I'd like to call this repeating back to order, please. Uh, next item is item I, water tank repair, retake bid, Brandon Davis. Brandon, in, David.
Mayor, counsel.
And, uh, I'll just key it up, and, uh, Mr. Hall can talk about it, he's specific, but y'all may recall, we did, uh, put this out for bid, it was the, uh, Forrester tank, uh, y'all had authorized Turnsean to assist us in getting together a bid packet. Uh, bid packet, uh, was sent out, and subsequently opened with Mr. Chris Boje and staff. Uh, we had four, uh, this was May twentieth, but we did have four bidders, uh, three viable bids, uh, one bidder was essentially non-responsive, obviously for purposes of the bid tabulations that you have, uh, Mr. Turnsean evaluated the three bids, and concluded as to staff, uh, that there is an apparent low bid, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I don't know if you want me to go into any of the specifics of the price for the entity that was the apparent low bid?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it is, uh, Precise Contractors Incorporated out of Mulford, Georgia. Uh, their apparent low bid, or their low bid as it was confirmed, was one oh five eight hundred even, uh, and that would, uh, allow for, uh, and I'll let David kind of comment on the exact nature of-
What were the other bids?
The other, uh, bids, Utility Service Company Inc. out of Perry, one fifteen, three hundred even, uh, Southeastern Tank and Tower Inc. out of Lake Park, uh, one seventeen, six hundred.
We have never used this company, have we, David?
No, Turnsean, uh, Chris, the turnsean engineer, let me check the references, and their references all checked out.
Where are they located again?
Mulford.
Mulford.
And this is the, the higher of the two, uh, the paint selection, uh, was suggested by the engineer. You know, because more five fifteen tank looks great, Liberty Lane tank looks great, and it's been Mulford.
Uh, they, we, we look, the, uh, the, the style of paint we're specifically talking about is, the Liberty was in twenty-eleven, so eight years.
Yes, it looks great. Uh, I believe it's been a long, but-
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, counsel, it is-
This, this one was built when?
Uh, probably oh two, oh one.
Oh one, oh two, okay.
And so it's fifteen-year paint is what they suspected at?
At that price, at the- Okay, uh, just curious, I've not heard of that company and the utility and the other ones we have, and Pittsburgh didn't bother to make a bid?
No, they were the one that, they just completed their package correctly.
Oh, you ran it through that. Okay, counsel, uh, low bid appears to be approved by our engineer and our administration, will entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Precise Contractors for one oh five eight hundred.
That was transparent.
Precise.
Precise. Okay, alright. Okay, you got to be a second. Be a second. Got a motion, a second. Discussion?
The question is, we did budget, I believe, around a hundred?
One hundred, exactly.
Has staff looked at excess?
We, we did look, and at this moment, uh, we have budgets of a hundred thousand that we have under some project budget, uh, so the six thousand, five thousand eight hundred, uh, we would, by virtue of this motion, amend the line to incorporate it to, to fulfill the, the one oh five eight hundred.
Do you have a discussion? Being on all fair book with your hand? If you know, thank you, guys. Uh, hang right there, Grandview Water Line up there.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably more for my benefit, uh, being fairly new, and I've asked, uh, David to sit with me, but basically, what we would like to do, similarly to the way that we've, uh, asked y'all with the sanitation truck, is for us to begin the process of exploring, uh, presenting y'all at the July one meeting, uh, with, uh, essentially, uh, an inventory of items that we would need to purchase, uh, it would be a sizable amount. Uh, at this moment, in talking with finance last week, uh, we would perhaps look at a phased approach, uh, we had budgeted seventy-five thousand this fiscal year in cash, but rather than seeking approval at July one for expensing all seventy-five thousand, uh, we would present to you all a phased approach of purchasing, uh, twenty-five, 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 twenty-five fifty, however, the budget and cash flow, Mayor, uh, is a ceasefire.
Okay. Uh, anybody heard from the county, they're, they're, uh-
They're just still pilot testing, they're treatment facilities, all of that, I heard.
Right, I gotta call them, Rick Jefferson today, he was up there pumping water and treating water, and putting it back into the lake, he said, I guess that would be the pilot test, and they'll need to do this before the EBD will give them the ultimate permit.
Yes, yes, and we've been talking about the possibility of them laying, maybe laying the line to give that a brand new, and bring it to us, you know, the brand new community, and get it down to us on the road.
Uh, well, we're gonna have to buy water from the county, the Grandview, 'cause they're in our service delivery area, I mean, Grand, uh, excuse me, the Savage Army, I'd like to look at the possibility, get it all the way into their system.
It's good, it'd be expensive, it's driveway, driveway.
It is, but it's our service area, and I hate to lose that, so, uh, you know, I thought that service area pretty whole.
Yeah, they're not gonna, I don't think they would ask us to give that up, just for, you know, that puts out the-
Well, you go buy a house, you don't give them water, and they don't care if the county or the city has it, they want water.
Yes.
Just look at it real close.
Yeah, we're just, we're just in talks.
Like have that meter sitting right there, their, uh, water treatment plant, and then we can get it to the system.
Yes.
Just stop.
They're, they're still approaching, uh, stuff that is experimental.
Yeah, this pilot system they're using is too small, it's not even, uh, I don't know why they're doing it, but the EBD's required it.
They operate, part of the sale, they're a big deal, it's not play operator.
This is the European model we're talking about?
Uh, yeah.
You, you, if you wanna treat water service water, you better have an operator.
That's what I thought, but-
I don't wanna drink it.
I hope, and then, so it's gonna be done with us?
Yeah, uh, we will have to approve that, I imagine, we may be pumping water up there too. The council, again, that is our service area, we'll buy water from the county, sell it to our customers, all the way from there to town, to wherever, and then, we would put water back into their system. Uh, their, their water would go west toward, uh, Bent Creek, actually, would, actually would finally be released on the other side of Bent Creek, uh, we'd have a meter there that way.
Yeah, that's where we run our service delivery.
That's where we like to sell water back, or buy, yeah, okay. With that, uh, anything else, Brandon? I was shocked when Rick told me that they were treating water, and I thought, man, we're nowhere near ready to run a water line, so you're on the right track.
Yes, sir.
So we'll anticipate hearing from you next month with a cost of some sort, for a certain stage.
July one, we would ask for authorization to purchase, and then, uh-
Okay, I think, uh, plus, there might be more monies based on dealing with water versus general.
Yes, sir.
Uh, alright, new business. David, you're not too dare sit down. Uh, wait, see, a new business continued is, uh, water pollution control dump truck repairers?
Red one.
Did I miss something?
Red, that truck that was off in, loan contract, a few years back, it needs a complete rig job, and the person unfortunately to be certified that does the rig repair, and that's why I'm looking at outside sources to do, and warranty for repair which done, uh, the repair on a roll-off truck earlier, uh, had bid sixty-five hundred dollars, this is all for the axles on the dump truck, uh, sixty-five hundred dollars in cover equipment come in at seventy-five hundred. Uh, this truck is still in good operational condition, other than the brakes, this means brakes will run back.
Will, will he come to our, or we take the truck to him?
Will come to us.
Okay. And did you look at any other mechanic, uh, or certified department?
Uh, just those students on one week, as I tell them, Brandon, I really didn't need big blank, I just didn't work here enough.
Okay, no law law chair anymore, I guess we're on dump truck. We entertain a motion to approve the sixty-five hundred?
Yes.
For the repair of the dump truck, and tell the counsel what that dump truck does need to do.
Hauls gravel whenever needed, uh, on our work projects, and also hauls sludge, uh, to the landfill, uh, we probably haul, sometimes it's maybe that's probably three or four loads a week, sometimes none, to train them, but if it's the work we can, like it hasn't labeled, uh, as many as three or four-
We've had that day, how many years?
There's a little bit left in repairs in the budget, we've had a lot of things happen today.
And we've been working on the rigs and that thing's big up.
We tried to-
We entertain a motion to approve that number?
I make the motion to take the low bid, the former truck repairer for sixty-five hundred dollars.
Be a second.
Sir?
Motion, second discussion, being on all fair book with your hands. Thank you, guys. Brandon, stay where you're at, sir. Uh, next item is item L, S P L O S, two thousand twenty committee formation, uh, for the record, let's talk about what this committee formation is all about. Brandon, I'll recognize you to get started, and you know, you get me started, you can't make me stop doing this P L O S.
Well, I will, I will say that, uh, the mayor and I, along with some, uh, key staff, uh, attended, um, a meeting, uh, a few weeks back, May sixteenth, I believe, in which, uh, the, the county called a statutory meeting with, uh, their, their staff and the other cities in the county. Uh, they outlined the statutory required number of meetings, uh, at that meeting, we advised them that we would, uh, like to have some additional meetings, uh, beyond that of the statutory requirements, which-
And counsel, the committee that I'm about to point will be face-to-face with the county commissioner and county commission, who attended that meeting, and myself and Brandon were the only ones there, and had the council meeting, I, after planning meeting, I recommended, uh, Dr. Proctor and John Bass be the negotiators with the county, and, uh, are you willing to accept these charges?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you are the committee, and I'll be helpful with you if I need it, otherwise, I'll expect you guys to negotiate the details with Brandon, Brandon, I'm sorry, I'm telling you, and Lisa, you'll need to attend those meetings as well. Next item, uh, reduced water rights, sewer rights application, Lisa?
I have left that in my office. Sorry, that, uh, this person turned it on my page back in April, and I was failed to be told about this, and I wanted to make sure I get her on this meeting, she is-
She meets all requirements?
She's all the requirements. I have a copy, and I'm sorry, I forgot.
Make a motion to approve the application for reduced water rights.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion, a second discussion, being on all fair book with your hands, unanimous? So it'll also be shown, Tony left close to the funeral home, for the record, okay? Uh, he didn't want to, but he had to, I mean, he had to, he wanted to, I guess. Uh, that's the end for business, the mayor's report, Lisa, financial?
Mayor, counsel, in your packet, um, you should have a copy of the financial report for the month of May. Uh, in the general fund, we collected a hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-three dollars in local option sales tax, compared to ninety-nine thousand, one eighty-five last year. Um, year-to-date, we've collected five hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, compared to five hundred and four thousand last year.
A hundred and twenty-three, is that?
That's good.
All down high?
That's big, yeah, I think it is, I don't-
That's twenty-five point six percent of the local option sales tax, for the record.
If you'll look over at, this P L O S fund, three twenty-one, we, we now have a cash balance of one point two six six million, and I also, in the back of my pages, I put a, a spreadsheet back there that shows what we have spent so far this year, and what we've collected each month, to be able to review that. Uh, this P L O S, for the, for the current period, is not reported, Lindsay left for vacation, and this money came after she was gone, so, um-
It's twenty percent of that?
Right, ninety-five thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars is what we collected for last month. And on the water and sewer fund, hundred five oh five, um, we're right at it, right at what we should be for expenditures, we should be at forty-one point sixty-seven percent for the year, or forty-one point oh eight. Um, but we've not, our collections look low, part of that is because we, we budgeted a good bit, probably close to three hundred thousand in grant monies for the Grandview for this year, but, um, I don't know where we are with that, if anybody's working on the Grandview, Grant, Grant fund again, or is Turnsean working on that?
Part, part of it is, I believe, we've received about ninety-five percent, uh, ninety-five percent complete plans of the land of the line from Turnsean, so I don't know if we're expecting the hundred percent, we're trying to time it all together, so then we can pursue grant monies predicated on the final plans, yes, sir.
Okay, I was meant to ask you that earlier, um, but we're showing, year-to-date, a loss of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, just because we've, we've spent a whole lot of the money at the first of the year, um, repairs, uh, lift stations that we weren't planning, weren't planning on spending for, and we've upgraded the pump stations, three pump stations, right?
Yeah, this is the lowest five months of the year for water.
Yeah, so hopefully that'll turn around, um-
I have to really get my water bill.
Oh, goodness, we, you know, when the, the last generator, the Pope generator messed up, and we had to ask for more money?
Money came in?
It came in, yeah, finally.
Hey, how much was it?
Fourteen dollars, something, and we were happy, I was happy, yeah, but I wasn't sure we would get it. Um, and that, that's all I, I had for you, counsel.
Questions, counsel?
Miss Lisa, on the five thousand and over? Ms. Lisa, on the five thousand and over sheet?
Uh huh.
Sixty-six, one sixty for Jose Oliver and Mahor. Says received a five thousand, right, Martin? So is the fifty-nine, eighty-nine accurate, or was it, what was that for?
What, which one, sorry?
Sixty-six, one sixty. Check number? For Jose Oliver and Mahor?
That, that's the monies we have for the lawsuit, the expenditure sheet.
That's Dave's, five hundred.
And so the monies we receive under insurance is reimbursable.
Yep, thank you.
That's not bad, did it? Is that bad enough?
Well, you know, we're at seven.
Okay, I just know you. Okay, thank you, Brandon. Anything else, council? Slime, out of being roads and other reports?
We got a long list.
I've got, so. Okay, as of today, Lisa put the bid package in for the streets. The first one, the second bid package is being prepared to go out in a couple of weeks. We've gone research seven point sixty-five miles on this first bid package. That will cover from Stegall or Veterans Memorial Drive all the way to Luke Carver Drive, which is right behind Wendy's, goes up to the O'Napa. It will go as far north as Philodente Road and as far south as the hospital. And so it will get every bit of that area. The La Mig money this year was for site wells. That bid package is being processed and going in very shortly for bids on a new company.
How much was the La Mig?
Sixty-seven?
Yes.
Last one, I think.
It's the last, yeah, it's been.
Think of a reason for that?
No, it didn't. The DOT has finally contracted with a company out of North Carolina to.
Seven hundred ninety-eight calls from nine-one-one, fire, a fire from fifty-six motor vehicle accident. Issue a total of eighty-nine citations for following fifty-six people, two seatbelt, one shoplifting, one off of use of wireless device, one reckless driving, one suspended overload, Georgia State Patrol, Michigan, total of seventy-five, for Grand Teton City Court, one hundred and sixty-four citations. Seventeen state warrants were taken for the following, one reckless conduct, two counts of battery, two counts of cruelty, two of the third degree violation of family violence protective order, possession of methamphetamine, one simple battery, one violation of torture to cross up the back, one possession of marijuana, less announced, one obstruction, one improper passing, one violation of a temporary protective order, one count of four degree and fourth degree, two shoplifting, and one simple battery, family violence. This lane is called with one or two, forty-one long calls, twenty-one disorderly, nine arrests, nine trespassing ordering, thirty-six suspicious activity, and twenty-five domestic calls, unless again, one murder.
Other than May, the city's fire department responded to two structural fires outside the city, none inside. No vehicle fires in, one outside, no grass fires or rush inside, and one outside. Eleven motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, none outside of the city. Forty-one emergency mobile responses inside, thirty-five out. Nineteen other calls inside, thirteen out. As of the end of the month, five hundred and sixty-three calls. By extension, looking for sets of plans for renovation and construction conducted, nineteen inspections.
Questions, council?
Thanks, sir.
Get no other business. Intervent a motion?